All right, Doug, you can get started now.
Here. Good afternoon, everyone. And what, and thank you for taking time out of your busy day to join CDW Canada and Cisco Marocchi to learn more about their vape sensor and camera solutions for Ontario K-12 school districts. My name is Doug Feebig and I'm an education strategist with CDW Canada. Before joining CDW, I spent thirty-three and a half years working in technology in the K-12 education sector for a small Ontario school district, with the last eight and a half of those years serving as their ICT manager. I've also been involved in a number of provincial initiatives for both the Education Collaborative Network of Ontario, ACTNO, and the Ontario Association of School Business Officials, or WASBO. My role at CDW Canada is to support their education sector customers with finding solutions to their issues, assisting with implementing new initiatives, and identifying and promoting new and innovative products or services that would be beneficial to the education sector. Please feel free to reach out at any time for my assistance. My contact information will be displayed at the end of this webinar. Before we get started, I do have a couple of housekeeping items that I would like to address. First, please note that this webinar is being recorded and the link shared with those who have registered. Second, we do want the session to be as interactive as possible, so please feel free to ask questions either during the webinar or post your questions in the chat. We will address them at the end of the session. The agenda for today, if I can get the agenda screen put up, please. We will start with some brief introductions of the team members involved in today's webinar. Following introductions, we will have an overview and a demo of Cisco Marocchi's vape sensor and camera solutions. We will then review the ministry-supported contracts and GPOs that are available for your district to leverage. There will be an opportunity for some Q and A, and finally, we will wrap up today's session. Let's begin with a brief recap of why we're here today. Student vaping has reached unprecedented levels in Canadian schools, presenting a persistent and escalating challenge. Despite the Smoke Free Ontario Act, vaping among students continues to rise. Although perceived as a less harmful than traditional cigarette smoking, vaping does pose significant health risks to our youth. In response to the escalating trend of vaping amongst students, Ontario has announced an increased allocation of funding to support an initiative aimed at prohibiting vaping within school premises. This investment seeks to furnish schools with enhanced security measures encompassing the installation of security cameras, improved lighting, and the development, a deployment of vape sensor solutions. So let's start off by introducing today's team members. First from CDW, we have Judy Athard, CDW Education Sales Manager, Jessica Heim, CDW Manager of Business Development, and joining the CDW team today is Katie Antonetti, Marocchi Product Sales Specialist. Welcome, Katie, and thank you for joining us. At this time, I would like to hand things over to Katie to tell us about the current Cisco Marocchi vape sensor camera solutions. Katie, the floor is yours.
Amazing, thank you so much. I appreciate the introduction, Doug. And hello, everybody. Thank you for your time in advance here today. I'm gonna go through maybe a quick intro for myself, actually. So, as Doug said, my name is Katie Antonetti. I cover our smart cameras and our sensor portfolio for our education customers in the U.S., where I'm based, as well as up in Canada. That's K-12, higher ed, et cetera. With that, I speak, I don't think a day goes by, definitely not a week, where vape or vape detection, or smoke, or some sort of chemical comes up in conversation from K-12 school districts. School districts or school boards in Canada. Unfortunately, very, very sad, of course. And really, what we're trying to do here is just help get the students to understand the implications of what vaping does. In the U.S. at least, back in 2018, the U.S. Surgeon General deems vaping in youth an epidemic. So for us in the U.S., we've had this issue for quite some time. With the pandemic, of course, it became less of an issue for the school, school boards and school districts, and more of an issue for the parents since they were home. Of course, once we've returned to, returned to school, it's picked back up again in the U.S., and it is still deemed an epidemic. And of course, and for those that are unaware, I'm sure everybody here, being an educator or being a part of the education team, you know, youth brains or adolescents' brains are still developing. So it's stunting their brains, stunting their growth. And also, of course, it makes it really difficult to concentrate when we have all these chemicals going on in our brain. So that's really what we're trying to do. Just a little bit of background on me from my family. My sister's a school principal. I'm actually at her house right now, and she's an elementary school principal, and even she is dealing with these challenges at her school. So this isn't just even high school. Unfortunately, it is hitting the elementary schools, at least here in the U.S. And I'd love to hear from our, our, our customers on the call here. You wanna throw it in the chat, or if you wanna wait till afterward, what you're experiencing, right? We would love for this to be interactive, and, and that helps me learn as well. So with that, I'm gonna show some slides, that way I can kinda lay the foundation. I will provide a live, a demo as well, not a live demo of vaping or anything like that, but I will show you what the interface looks like and how we can take some measures to implement a solution and where we go from there. So with that, I will share my screen here. Kick off the slideshow. And I'm gonna dive right into vaping, right? There are a few other topics I'll talk about here, but this is what I know everybody's come to listen about and, and learn about, I should say, and discuss. So vape detection. We first came out with a sensor. It was our MT-14 sensor, which you'll see in a little bit in our portfolio slide. We now have an MT-15 sensor. And at the end, I'll have Sean show this, cuz he's got one with him, and I'll have him show you what it, what it actually looks like, and we can run through it. But for vape detection itself, this sensor, it does T-vox. It was just total volatile organic compounds, right? It does particulate matter, or PM2.5. And that PM2.5 is really what we're looking for when it comes to vape or smoke fumes. T-vox can be set off with aerosols or cleaning supplies much more easily than a PM2.5 would. So when we're talking about vape detection, the measure that we're most interested in is particulate matter. And we sample the air real time, actually every second. That's faster than a lot of the other solutions out there, where they might be three seconds or five seconds. So we are real time when we're looking at this MT-15 sensor. But it, it does more than just detecting vape. Yes, that's, that's a use case, and that's what we're here to talk about. We can mount this in bathrooms, either, you can mount it anywhere, of course, but in the bathroom, you'd either mount it on a ceiling, or you can mount it on the wall, because there's fans on both sides of it, actually. So you can do ceiling or wall mounted. There are cable slots in the back for power. We do need persistent power with this particular sensor. Not the case with all of our sensors, but because we are sampling the air real time, we need this plugged in. Some of our other sensors operate off a AA battery. Now, what we can do is we can set up alerts. Alert me if PM2.5 goes above X amount. And we have those default vape alerts in our dashboard to give you an indication of where you should start. Now, it will be different for, you know, different restrooms, i.e., if you have a restroom that is larger in size and/or it can be smaller in size but has poor ventilation, right? We're gonna get different results, and we're gonna need a different amount. But from a kind of a rule of thumb standpoint, we, we, we suggest one per every 100 square feet. That's just rule of thumb. It depends how your restrooms are set up, how many you have on each, how many stalls on each side, cuz typically, students are going into the stalls to do it, but not always, right? And we can talk more about that, should you be interested in doing a trial. We wanna make sure you, we get you the, the right, the, the right amount of equipment. But what happens if somebody vapes? What happens if this alert goes off? This is what I hear a lot. Then what? Okay, so I get a text message to my phone saying the, the fumes went up. What do I do with that? Well, there's a few things that you can do. Of course, you can manage that just from your, you know, manage that next process just from your phone, from however you write that up, or you can use an API partner. One that we have is mPro5. So we're an open platform. For those of you not familiar with Marocchi, we are an open platform via API, and we can send this information to mPro5, which has an app, a mobile app on their phone. And you as a, your school principal, the teachers, the, we have school resource officers down here in the U.S., anybody that you have that's in charge, they would, of this, they would get a notification through mPro5 that says, hey, vaping may be occurring in X bathroom. And then it gives them a process flow of things they need to go through and select. So that way, you know that something's been done to remediate the situation. Because if we just get notifications, but we don't do anything with them, you know, there's not much that we're gonna go past that then, if we're just gonna get the notifications. So we do have API partners that can help with that piece. We'll talk about, more about the vape detection here towards the end again, cuz I'm gonna have Sean show it to you once I'm done sharing my screen, so we'll wrap back over with that. But I did wanna put on, on here a quick news article that this school, actually, their school in Ohio, wrote on their own, right? So this isn't like a case study that we did with them. They specifically call out, this is our MT-14, so this is before we had the 15. MT-14 also does vape detection with it. I would recommend the 15 for various reasons that we can talk about, should, should you wanna discuss further. But they, they installed these two summers ago in their bathrooms, and when students came back to school, saw them, right? And it actually worked as a deterrent for them, because their student body wrote an article about the vape detectors that were, the sensors that didn't detect vape in the bathrooms. And that alone stopped a lot of kids from vaping, at least in the restrooms. So, again, a lot of students, you can see here at the end, on the right-hand side, we just wanted to deter or detract kids from, from conducting this behavior, right? What else can we do with this sensor, though? Right? Let's get more out of it. Well, back in May, the sensor does, aside from T-vox and particulate matter, it does ambient noise. It does temperature, humidity, and carbon dioxide exposure. So that's what we're exhaling, right? This is a highlight, if you Google San Jose Middle School, this is back in May this year, I think it's May 8th, I believe. They had some chemical compounds that got released into the air in a science classroom. And they didn't have any, they don't have any air quality sensors in those science classrooms. And so they actually, unfortunately, had a few kids hospitalized because of that carbon dioxide exposure. So carbon dioxide at the base level is what we're exhaling. So if we're in a room that's not well-ventilated, we start to get tired, you know, we get lethargic, our brains kinda shut down, which can affect, obviously, our ability to learn. But in addition to that, if you do, or where you do have your science classrooms or any chemicals, this would be a really great solution to put in there to ensure or help ensure this does not happen, because once those carbon dioxide levels spike, you'll get a notification. All right, well, let's talk about how these sensors work, right? We talked about the use case that everybody came to this webinar for, but how do they work? So our MT sensors are Marocchi things, very technical term there. They operate over Bluetooth low energy, and they connect to our Marocchi dashboard on the right-hand side there through a Marocchi camera and/or a Marocchi access point. So those are the MRs for the access points, or the MVs for the cameras. So they are not a standalone solution, which is why I would like to speak with you a little bit about and highlights our camera solutions, so you can see how these tie together. Again, you can use the access points as well. Everything just needs to be within Bluetooth range. The cameras themselves, though, will provide you a visual of what's happening. Now, of course, we know we can't put cameras in bathrooms, but we can put them outside of restrooms. And when that beep, a sensor alert goes off, we would be able to see really quickly who walked in or out of that restroom within a certain amount of time. And I'll show you what that looks like from a corresponding, the video with the sensor itself, right after this. Before we get there, I just wanted to highlight our portfolio. So we did talk about the indoor air quality sensors, that's the MT-14 and the MT-15. We also have some other sensors. So on the far left-hand side, this is where we started, which is protecting the network closet. So temperature and humidity, water leak sensors, and door open close. We've more recently stepped into the power monitoring. So MT-40, it's a smart power controller, so it's inline power. We can monitor our energy efficiency, et cetera. But what we can also do is we can remotely reboot or toggle power on and off to whatever's plugged into this, this device itself. So if you find yourself having, or somebody on your team having to go out to remote sites, or a site, or just you're not onsite, to reboot something, you don't have to do that anymore, as long as this is plugged in. It will also provide you an alert if your power goes out. And on the right-hand side, we have a cold storage temperature probe. So this is for refrigeration and freezers. We have, I have quite a few school districts who use these to ensure food, to help ensure foods, what, food does not spoil, excuse me. Some case in points down here in the U.S. Texas has been hit off and on with some snowstorms over the past few years, and they weren't able to, and it's not normal, unlike, unlike up in Canada, you guys are used to that. In Texas, they're not. And so they weren't able to go to school site for a week, right? We called it snowmageddon. And their, their power went out, they didn't know when it went out exactly, they didn't know if the food was still good, and quite a bit of food had to be thrown away, right? Cuz we don't want to take that risk. So we have a lot of customers that use this for that, and, and maybe it's even in conjunction to something else that's already used, that's already built into the refrigerator, because all of this is then built into the Marocchi dashboard. So single pane of glass. And finally, our MT-30, it's a push-button automation sensor, and I'll kinda talk about that here as I walk through a use case for just protecting your, your classrooms and/or high-traffic areas with cameras and sensors, and have a view that, and how we can then get that information out to the masses. So the MT-30 smart button, it is really just a button that you press. If anybody goes to the grocery store, and if you have anything like locked away in high-dollar value cabinets, you have to press a button or wave your hand in front of a sensor to get that store employee to come over and help. It's the same concept, push a button. If this, if I press this button, then that. So if I press this button, then whatever I program it to do. So I'm gonna program it to send a text message or notification that I need help in this classroom. Or perhaps it's to, for an IT, hey, the printer's not working, right? The copier's not working. Or for school safety, we can tie it into a mass notification system. I have SingleWires and Formacast here as one example. We partner with many different mass notification systems, which can then handle the next phases, whether that's a message over the PA system, or a mess, or, or writing on, on screens, on monitors, or even dispatching 911. All right, so you can, you can kinda take it from there, whatever you want through that mass notification system. And the last thing here on the sensor side, MT-20, our door open close on the far right, that is, that's gonna ensure your classroom doors are closed. We, here in the U.S., we want our, our classroom doors closed if they open to an outside area, but perhaps you want it for like network closets, or just any sensitive area. And maybe you don't have badge access control on that, or maybe you do, but the person who gets the badge access control event, meaning like a badge-in, they're not the person that needs to know if that door was left open. So we offer flexible alerting with this sensor. On the far right-hand side, you can see, I can say, don't alert me if the door gets opened and shut. That's business as usual. I expect students, teachers, staff, parents to be walking in and out. But do alert me if that door stays open for a certain amount of time. That's a risk, right? That's a physical security risk. I need to send somebody out to go ahead and get that door shut. And of course, you can schedule these, all the alerting, everything that we do from a learning perspective, so you're only getting alerts during certain hours and/or on certain days. So what does this look like? How does it all tie together? Well, here we have, we're gonna digitally link a sensor. Here, we're using an open-close sensor, but you can use any sensor. So you could use that MT-15 for vape detection. And we're gonna digitally link it to a camera that can, that's either facing that door, facing that sensor. So we have the door open-close sensor on the door on the door frame. We have alerts set up just to alert me if the door gets open. We're looking at them for the last two hours. We hover over that alert. We see a thumbnail image of what happened at the time of the alert, but we can actually say, go to the video. It'll take us right to that video on August 3rd here at 12:40 PM, and we can see, there's the sensor, and there's the second part of the sensor. Those operate off a AA battery, by the way. They'll last up to five years, and then you just replace the battery, and we can see what happened at that time. Now, if we don't wanna log into our dashboard, we can also get that via our mobile app. So very easy to tie these systems together. I talked quite a bit about the sensors themselves. Again, they do operate off a AA battery, since I just mentioned that, aside from a select few, like that inline power one, of course, that plugs into the wall. And then, of course, our MT-15 does require persistent power. But how do, like, they connect? They need a camera, they need a Marocchi access point, they need one or the other. Let's talk about our camera architecture very quickly before I go into our, our demo. Our camera architecture is all cloud managed. That doesn't mean it's cloud stored. It means it's cloud managed. We store on the cameras themselves. So each camera has a high-end processing chip for us to be able to do a whole bunch of advanced analytics, like find the person in the red shirt, right? And then track them across my campus. And/or the storage capacity itself, we can store for, for quite a bit of time on those cameras. We have up to a full terabyte of storage onboard. So we record on the camera. We can also do a record if you need to send videos to the cloud, you can do that, but most of our customers find ample storage on these cameras, especially in the education space. We can be anywhere to access, though. That's both the cameras, the sensors, all Marocchi products. So I don't have to be local, I can be wherever. So just need an internet connection. And here's what our different interfaces look like. This is for the cameras themselves, and I'll show you actually what the sensors look like. So we have a great vision portal. This is different than dashboard. If anybody is familiar with dashboard, this looks very different, of course. This is where our camera-only users live, to be able to conduct investigations and find that person in the red shirt, or the blue pants, or find that black car. We also have this great mobile app where we can do live viewing and conduct investigations on it. And then we have a Marocchi display. It's via Apple TV, where we can have video walls, where we can view our video. So whether that's displaying it in a lobby, so that way people know that they're on camera, and/or having it back at house, right? For, for, you know, a security operations center type thing. And then just a really quick highlight of that mobile app itself, where you can see where you can conduct an investigation. On the far right, we can draw a box, an area of interest, if you will, and say, only show me when you detected people in this area, and say, only show me what is people, not just any motion. We do people detection on all our cameras, vehicle detection on our outdoor cameras, and attribute detection on our newer cameras, which is find the person in the teal shirt, right? The person that was just walking towards us on the left-hand side. So with that, I'm gonna go into a quick demo here. So I do have, right here, our sensors pulled up. This is the Marocchi dashboard. This is our San Francisco office. I'm not in San Francisco right now, I'm actually partway across the country, but that's okay, just need the internet connection. This is set to Pacific Standard Time, though, so 10:23, and then, and my laptop in the top right, that will come into play when I, I do show you the cameras really quickly. But here, I can sort through if I know like the camera model, or the, excuse me, the sensor model, MT-15. So the MT-15 is what we're gonna wanna use for vape detection, and we can see all of the measurements that we're getting here. And again, that PM2.5 is that measurement that we're looking for for, for e-cigarettes, vape, regular cigarettes, et cetera. You can see other things that might set PM2.5 off, automobile fumes. So if you had a bathroom next to a car shop, or your shop, and you had a bus yard, something like that, and fumes are getting in, that could set PM2.5 off. Construction sites, cooking fumes. We don't expect people to be cooking in the bathroom, and if they are, we probably wanna be notified about it, right? Whereas, if we're looking at T-vox, T-vox are going to be set off a lot more easily. It, it, it absolutely, we will pick up vaping within the T-vox, but you're gonna get a lot more noise as well, because we're going to get stuff from aerosols, like I talked about, and cleaning solutions. So, of course, you know, students going to the bathroom, spraying perfumes, Axe Body Spray, et cetera, it's gonna be picked up, and you're gonna see your T-vox spike a lot more than you'll see your particulate matter. We have that ambient noise here, so we can see, we, we, we sample that every five seconds, so it's not real time like the vape would be, but we can tell if something gets really loud for, you know, at least five seconds there. And we graph it all out, of course, for you. So the sensors themselves, pretty, pretty easy to use here. Just gonna pull up our overview here. So if I go to our overview tab, we can see anything that's currently alerting, anything that has low battery. We know these tend to have a low battery, so you know what? We need to replace those batteries, because we, we actually need them working. This is offline, of course, probably because the battery is low. When we look at, back to the MT-15, let's actually go to the MT-15. Goodness gracious, here we go. Go back to the online ones, and go to sensors themselves. And here we go. I can't remember if we have, yes, vape right here. So this is an MT-14, but it has a, our vape detection alert on it. So if I click this, you can see that we are sampling every one second. Right? So with that, I do wanna quickly show you, and then I'll, we'll open up for questions as I have Sean show the, the sensor itself. If you do have a cost, if you do have the need for cameras at your school as well, even if you already have a camera system, we can send our video into a third-party system through RTSP. So you could set these cameras up outside the bathrooms to be able to see kids, or students, or whomever, walking in versus out of the bathroom at the time of that vape. And we can pair those up, as you saw. But when we're in our cameras, we can actually go into what we call our Marocchi Vision Portal. So our Marocchi Vision Portal, I've already launched it, is a separate viewing portal for our cameras today. And from here, we can do cool things, and this is the last thing I'll show before I, I open it up here. We can show some cool things by going like, let me search certain cameras. Everything is natural language processing, so I can search by these tags over here on the right, like by saying second floor, right? If I type it incorrectly. Or I can use my, the names of the cameras. It just helps you get through the system a lot faster. So I'm gonna pull up two cameras here. These cameras have the ability to do people detection, and some of, one of them has the ability to do vehicle detection. I'm gonna go back in time, just so I can show you, let's see. Sounds good. The retention on this. So usually, we see K-12s on school boards retaining video for about 30 days. You can see, I just went past, it went past 30 days. We still have video here, and you know what? I'm looking for somebody who took a bike out of this room that may or may not be theirs, actually. And I know they were wearing a green shirt, so I can very quickly type, hit green, and only people with green tops come back. Actually, the person was wearing red. We can very easily change that. And all this processing is happening on the edge on the camera, and it's instantaneous here for me. Once I click on, on a video itself, I can view that in the feed, and then I'm taken to my map, and this map, each dot represents a camera. The blue dots, the camera we're viewing in the center. I'm gonna pause the video. I'm gonna back it up 10 seconds. I'm gonna go to my map. I'm gonna click on another camera. This camera's alerting, so red means alerting, but we can still view the video here. And this is a 360 camera, I can de-warp it and play this video out. Now, you may or may not have noticed that I'm still at the same day and time, May 28th, at 6:36 PM. I can go up to related walls. This camera's on a bike room video wall, and I can see this person across multiple fields of views at once without having to re-navigate. That is key. We don't have to sit here with pen and paper and write down the day and time and re-navigate. We have it all right here. We can click on one, digitally zoom in, hand around, click back out, and switch between video walls. So having the cameras set up in, in your video walls in a logical way here, to be able to see the individual through the scene, perhaps they were vaping in our, in our bike room, and we've now just seen who it is, and we've seen where they've went. Right? We can then take this video, we can export it in the top right, and save this, and then we can actually be able to call them into our office and say, hey, the vape spiked, if we, we wanna even show them from here, and you were the one, you were the only one that left that bike room, or the bathroom. Right? And then you can use that to start a discussion. And really, that's the key, is being able to start that discussion with them. So with that, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. I'd love, Sean, if you could hold up the MT-15. Uh, I'd love, Sean, if you could hold up the MT-15. Amazing, thank you. There is an LED, that ring right there, that's an LED. It's optional to turn on. Uh, it will be, if you turn it on, you can adjust the brightness of it as well. Green, amber, or red. And you saw maybe when I clicked over those, um, those measurements of like T-Vox or particulate matter, the bar down below of what we consider good, fair, poor, inadequate, that will light up. You can choose which metric to apply it to. Now, you don't have to. Uh, I'd probably suggest for vaping that you don't, because you don't want the students to be able to see that it's just picked something up, right? Uh, but something for like carbon dioxide monitoring, or just overall air quality index, you can have that light up, and the benefit of that is, it's in the room. Maybe you have 30 people in a room, and none of them have access to the Meraki Dashboard. Well, how do they know if there's a problem? They don't. But because of the visual indicator of the LED, now they know. Right? Red means bad, I should probably get out of this room. Right? Um, so it's super helpful. And then, Sean, if you could just show the sides where we have the fans, perfect. So that's gonna pick up the, the fumes. And then the back of it itself, uh, you have two ports. So there's a Ethernet port. I wanna be very clear that the Ethernet port is for power only. Everything operates over BLE for data, because the architecture, none of these sensors have IP stacks on them. So we need the, the camera, or the sensor, or the, our, um, excuse me, access point to be able to send the data back. But we do give you that power option. And there's also a USB-C port side-by-side. That USB-C port can then be plugged into a standard wall outlet. So you have two options on how to power these. With that, um, Sean, do you have anything to add?
I would just say that, um, we have all the sensors in stock, everything's ready to go. We do see, try, and buy for all of our product through CDW. So we're not gonna send you refurbished gear, a trial kit. We're gonna send you net new gear in the box. As you do a proof of concept and test it in your environment, and it works, you know, the way that we want it, that we say it's going to work, you can just move forward with a purchase order from CDW. If you're not happy with the performance, or don't, don't feel that it performs in your environment, we know that's not gonna be the case. But if that is the case, we'll send you shipping tags to send the gear back. No questions, no cost to you. So, um, obviously, a really good way for you to move forward and start doing some testing with no risk. So please work with your CDW counterpart to get a see, try, and buy in your environment. If there is any questions, we'll pass the floor off to, uh, the BD team.
Thank you so much, Katie and Sean, for the detailed and, uh, informative presentation on Cisco Meraki's vape sensor solutions. Really appreciate it. If anyone has questions at this time, please, uh, cut off mute. You can unmute, or post your questions in the chat. So I'll throw it over to the attendees.
Thanks so much. It's Carolyn from Thames Valley. Uh, really appreciate the information that you had shared. Um, just so that you are aware, we're a board that, uh, is gradually shifting over to Meraki cameras. So, so that's great. Um, we are very much interested in, um, trialing the vape sensors that Cisco has, because obviously it's a great compatibility with their cameras. Um, and for this upcoming school year, I think we have, I could probably come off cam. Let me turn on my camera here. There we go. For this upcoming school year, uh, we've got one high school, uh, that we will be piloting these vape sensors. I know Jim from my board is on this call as well. I, I don't believe we've actually, uh, tested these vape sensors, uh, in our environment yet. Um, so I guess if we were to do that, how long of a test period would you be recommending? Um, and then, you know, helping us to kind of understand, um, you know, the success rate of that? And then, you know, we could, uh, go ahead to complete a purchase for, for one school. What would be your thoughts on a test period?
Yeah, great question. Oh, go ahead, Katie.
No, Sean, go for it.
Yeah, so we, we typically do two weeks. But if there's seasonality, or, or something within the school where, where you need to do a bit longer, we're always open to doing longer. We wanna do something that makes sense for the outcome that you're trying to go drive, and, and to, you know, obviously prove the concept works. So we're flexible to, to answer your question, but we typically do two weeks. But we could definitely do longer.
Okay. And, and just another, another question. Um, obviously, uh, for all of us with the funding that, uh, came through, uh, from our government, um, the funding kicks in for September, September 1st. Uh, I think is when we're actually gonna be able to access. And, uh, we would, uh, perhaps like to get these sensors set up kind of early in the school year, and then just, you know, as I said, see how it goes. Um, is there an option for us to maybe do an installation before school starts, but then still have that two-week test period? And again, just trying to think about, um, you know, there's obviously lots of activities for school startups, so we don't wanna be running around getting in vape sensors when students are walking the halls and that kinda stuff. So, uh, just kinda curious about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we, we can absolutely do that. Um, we, we can do a longer trial period. It's just more of, we don't wanna send gear just for it to sit. Um, but if you, uh, it's best to install before they get there. I, we, I think it's, kinda I talked about that, right? The, the, the case study or customer that I highlighted, they installed over summer, and kids didn't know they were in there yet, right? Right away. Um, and then they got some testing going. Um, there's really no, like, this is what I've, like, I've seen. We've sent sensors to a customer. One of my large customers in Florida, actually, a really large school board in Florida, um, we sent them sensors, and two days later, they put out an RFP. Two days. I don't know how they, they already started on the RFP, but they weren't looking at our sensors. We sent them ours, and they worked so well. They flipped it to, to ours, they, they put our, part of our name in it, the model number. Within the first day of them installing them, they caught multiple students. And they said, that's all we needed to know. Do they work? And they do work. Uh, whereas I've had other customers, they're like, we need a full month on this. Like, we need a full month of data, we wanna see the video that connects to it. We want, we want proof that it's there, all that kinda stuff. That's no problem. So we can, we can absolutely work with you, Carolyn, in the school board.
Okay. And my last question, I'll turn it over to others. Um, I guess, you know, with, with these sensors, the other piece that I've heard, and, um, I think elsewhere, uh, at my board, we might have trialed, uh, another product. Um, you know, kids are taking hockey sticks and whacking them off the ceilings. Uh, so how, how do you best manage, uh, some of the physical security around these, um, devices in the washrooms?
Yes. So we, we don't have anything that we provide, but what you, what I've seen customers do and talked with customers and worked with them is they put cages around them. Now, we don't wanna completely block them, right? We don't wanna put it into an casing, but you can put like metal cages around them, um, that will help, um, them not to be able to actually hit it, hopefully.
And we have, uh, third-party organizations that we work with, especially for companies in Alberta that work in dangerous and hazardous areas, in the, you know, in, in fracking in the oil fields, and, and they're used to, we've, we've had explosion-proof cases created. So we can definitely work with you to find somebody that can find a tamper-proof, uh, option for you, that can, uh, come, combat the hockey sticks.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Carolyn, for the questions. And, uh, thanks for Katie and Sean for answering those. I don't believe we have any more questions at this time. So next, I'm gonna hand, uh, pass it off over to Jessica Heim from CDW. Jessica will review the ministry-supported contracts and GPOs that are available for your district to leverage. Jessica?
Awesome, thanks for handing that over, Doug. So my name's Jessica Heim. I lead, uh, CDW's Public Sector Business Development Team. So essentially, my team exists, so you have that easy button when it comes to procurement with CDW. So my team looks after all of our large-scale vendor records and GPO contracts. So we're responsible for our fee planning, response, post-award execution, adopted growth and adoption growth and the success of the agreement. So essentially, we're your subject matter experts. So I do have a dedicated resource on my team, each aligned to one of our top GPO contracts that I'll be, uh, going into a little bit later. I guess beside me here on, uh, this org chart is Judy Affatt, who's our Education Sales Manager. So she leads a team of around 14 sellers, um, supported both inside account managers and field sellers. Then we also have a dedicated team in the Ottawa region, um, also supporting public sector and the federal government. Lastly, here, we have our Strategic Initiatives Team. So this is an extension of our Public Sector Sales Team. They work closely with our OEM partners such as Cisco, and they build strategic programs and partnerships to better serve you, our education customers. So essentially, I just wanted to kinda give you a little bit of a lay of the land of CDW and let you know that there's quite an army of folks, um, here that are here to support you, and we do have a strong focus on the broader public sector. If you don't mind moving to the next slide, please. So, so many of you on the line may be aware or already leveraging a collaborative purchasing agreement or GPO contract with CDW, um, or another supplier. But kinda wanna give you a bit of a refresher, or if this is new to you, wanna make you aware of the benefits. So essentially, a group purchasing organization goes out to RFP on your behalf. So they're completing that competitive solicitation process, saving you that time, the resources, and money from having to put out a tender or get three quotes for each technology project. So we all know, our fee process can be long, cumbersome. So leveraging a pre-ordered contract takes that RFP burden off your shoulders while being compliant with all the broader public sector procurement directives, and it just gets technology into action faster. So in cases like, you're all in right now, you're gonna get that ministry funding, you're preparing for September term, time's not exactly on your side, so leveraging a contract can, can truly help you out in scenarios like this one. Am I going to the next slide, please? So CW, we are awarded a number of contracts that are available for you all to leverage. Um, some may be more familiar than others, and some you may already be leveraging, but I wanted to provide you with all the options for, um, this vape sensing project. So all three of these contracts that you see on the screen, so these three logos, they're all 100% voluntary. So there's no volume or spend commitment, there's no membership fees. When you opt into these, you're not sending your life away. You can essentially opt in and utilize them however you see fit. So if it's just for this Meraki project, or if it's for, for their IT needs with CDW, essentially, they give you that easy button when it comes to procurement. So I'll give a brief overview of all three of these contracts that you see on the screen here, starting with Canoe. So Canoe Procurement Group of Canada, they are a national group purchasing organization, and they have partnerships with local municipal associations across Canada. So in Ontario, um, AMO, which is Association of Municipalities of Ontario, that would be their local municipal partnership. So Canoe contracts, um, they are available to all public sector organizations, so municipal, healthcare, K-12 education, higher ed, et cetera. But I do find that due to their partnerships, we do see a strongest adopter in the municipal space, but it is available to all broader public sector. So CW, we've been awarded Canoe suppliers since 2019. Uh, we were actually recently re-awarded the Technology Products and Services contracts. That'll be another eight-year contract, which is really exciting for us. Um, and this contract actually includes all of Cisco and Cisco Meraki solutions, as well as CW's full technology offering and all of our services. So essentially, if CW can provide a solution, it would be available through this contract, which offers you, as our customers, a lot of flexibility and choice, and essentially implementing the technology that's best suited for your environment. The next contract I wanna speak to is Kinetic GPO. Uh, Kinetic, similar to Canoe, they are a national group purchasing organization, um, available to all public sector organizations, so municipal, healthcare, education. Kinetic is actually CW's largest contract, and it is highly adopted in the Ontario market. So CW has been awarded Kinetic Supplier, uh, since 2017. Um, and this contract includes all Cisco and Cisco Meraki solutions, as well as CW's full technology offering and services. So similar to the Canoe contract, if CW can provide a solution, it is available through the contract. So with Kinetic and Canoe, you're kind of not pigeonholed into a one-size-fits-all solution or a SKU-based list, because it is a full, uh, full catalog. You can lead with the technology that's best suited for your environment, and you have that flexibility and choice in your, um, IT solutions. Lastly, I'm gonna speak to OECD. I'm sure many of the organizations, um, on the call here are familiar with OECD. They're a collaborative purchasing group for public sector in Ontario, so not national, like Kinetic or Canoe, but they do have a focus on K-12 education. So CW, we are awarded a number of OECD contracts. As you know, they have a little bit of a different route to market than Kinetic or Canoe, where they award contracts based on specific technology categories. So they'd have a contract for software, a contract for networking, end-user compute, staffing, services, et cetera. So the relevant OECD contract for this vape-detecting solutions would be the end-user compute agreement, so EUC. So it does include all Lenovo solutions with CDW, but also, um, Meraki solutions and other complimentary EUC accessories and peripherals. So essentially, all of these organizations exist to serve the broader public sector, the purpose of reducing procurement costs, leveraging the power of group buying. So in the end, it's saving you guys time, money, and simplifying the steps to work here. So all of these contracts are available to you to leverage as you see fit and simplify that procurement process of, um, the vape funding that you're getting from the ministry. That is actually all from me. So I'm gonna hand it back to Doug to wrap this up.
You very much, Jessica. Some excellent information for attendees looking to procure Cisco, uh, Cisco Meraki vape sensor solutions in their districts. Much appreciated. Uh, at this point, we don't have any questions, but we will open the floor for a second here. If anybody has any questions, please unmute or post your question in the chat. Not seeing any at this time, we'll move on.
Hey, Doug.
Oh, there we go. Go ahead.
Hey, Doug, sorry, I, I'm driving, I apologize. Jason here from Evan, I think Carolyn stole some of my questions. She likely does that a lot for me, but, uh, that's why we work so well together, maybe. Uh, anyways, um, my question is, I don't know if this has been answered, 'cause I came in late into the presentation. Um, we've, uh, we've got a couple, uh, POV, we have POV, POC on another couple of vape sensors out there. Um, those particular sensors, uh, send alerts, SMS messages to our vice principals and principals when the, uh, sensor goes off. Is that something, did I miss that? Is that what this sensor will do as well?
Correct. So you can do, uh, email or, or text message.
Okay, perfect. Um, my next question is, uh, is it, we have a, uh, we have a lot of Meraki cameras in our infrastructure right now. Obviously, that's the, one of the core reasons why I'm interested in kind of sticking with the, uh, uh, with, with the technology on this side. Um, is it very similar to the enterprise licensing schema that are with the cameras?
Correct. So we would pull your licensing into your existing EA, and then, um, all Meraki dashboards come with five free sensor licenses to get you started.
All right, perfect. Um, I have no questions about the procurement side, because I like, I can, CDW makes it easy for me. So I appreciate that. Um, that's all I have for questions.
And I know you have a sizable camera install. Uh, Katie, keep me honest, I believe the, the, it's about 200 feet from the sensor to a, to the nearest camera for connection for BLE.
Oh, fantastic, thank you.
It, it really depends, um, on what type, if it's line of sight or what type of, type of building structure we're trying to go through. Um, that, that's gonna take, it's, it's standard Bluetooth, low-energy rates, uh, rates, um, ranges apply, uh, which is really why we like to send them to you, so you can test them, to make sure. For instance, I have a customer in Hawaii where they're trying to go through cinder block. And you can't go very far through cinder block. Um, it just cuts that connection. Whereas, um, you know, if it's different type of building material, you're gonna be able to go through a, a longer distance.
Good questions, Jason, and, uh, thanks for addressing those. Uh, any other questions at this time? All right, well, I just wanna thank you once again for taking time of your busy schedules to join us today. If you do have any questions, would like to see a quote, or better understand which contract or GPO is the right foot for your school board, please reach out to your dedicated CDW account manager. If you're unsure who your dedicated at CDW account manager is, please feel free to reach out directly to Judy or myself. Our contact information is on the screen right now. Or drop a message in the chat identifying which school district you're with, and we'll reach out to you following the webinar. Once again, thank you for joining us today. And on behalf of CDW and Cisco Meraki, I wish you all a safe and enjoyable summer. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.